Town council meeting of April 24th. Like to begin with an invocation by Stephen Ayers.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for you to let us be here tonight. Hope that you give us the wisdom and insight to do your bidding tonight as we watch out for and plan for the town of Stallings. Please look after us as we leave this place. And in your son's holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty, I'll call this meeting to order. Public comments while we're waiting. Graham might notice Graham Hall is not here tonight. He is a new father and has parental, recent parental duties, so excellent news for him. Congrats, Grant, if you're watching. Graham, Graham, if you're watching, what?
Sure he's watching.
Yeah, he's.
Anyhow, all right, public comments.
Watching those kids and not these kids.
Fair parts on that's for the public hearing.
Gotcha. Any public comments? Anybody sign up? Anybody here want to speak? You're the only resident here, Eunice. You want to speak? All right, consent to agenda.
Motion approved, consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Next up, the agenda approval.
Motion approve agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Next up. To amend the article 9.8-3B to allow for trailers and portable offices for the housing of onsite, onsite staff and management if the trailers are at least 50 feet from the property lines and the lot is at least five acres or greater in size. I'll open the public hearing. And, oh, he's already there.
Oh, yeah, I just teleported.
Perfect.
Hello, counsel. Long time no see. Just kidding. I'm trying to find my text memo real quick. Usually they have the tabs on the agenda and they're missing today, so I apologize. It's taken me a little bit to get to there. Okay. That is not it. Okay, here it is. All right, so this is TX 230301, to allow work trailers on properties five acres or more in size. So the ordinance currently does not allow trailers to be permanent workplace buildings in any zoning district or any building lot type. But to further develop and promote the economic and commercial development of the town, we would like to allow work trailer, one work trailer onsite management operation and security for a site that's five acres in size. So the text amendment I requested as follows. I'm also going to bring up an alternative language for this text amendment as well that the applicant would like. But it's to say trailers, mobile and/or manufacturers or units may only be used as permanent highway buildings if the property is five acres or more in size. Or more, trailers and portable offices may only include an onsite management office to house staff for the management and operation of the site under the following conditions: located at least 50 feet from the property line, completely behind a primary structure, and only one such trailer, one trailer is allowed. I recommend approval, but I also wanted to bring up a alternative language. It's still very close, but the applicant would like me to show this to you guys for consideration as well. I put it in my folder. Yes, okay, so it's a Word document, but, okay, so it's very similar, but the things in blue are what's changed. So instead of, the main things are number two, completely behind a primary structure if such a structure is present on the site. And three, only one such onsite management office trailer is allowed. So I can pull them side by side as well, so you guys can look at this. But I just wanted to show what the applicant is ultimately requesting tonight, this language. It's not too different.
Can you by chance figure out, show us a comparison of what versus the other?
Yeah. So what I'll do is I'll just copy this. And I'll just place it underneath this Word document. So applicant will be at the top. Let me just undo that, so you can see the colors. The colors will not show up, but.
Get the idea.
Yeah. It's very similar. The only thing that are different is in blue. Do you have any questions for me? The applicant's also here as well.
Max, is limited to a zoning category?
So it's not limited to a zoning category. It's limited to a building lot type, which are highway commercial. And highway commercials allowed under the C-74 zoning district, the industrial and the business center zoning district. Patrick also did a calculation of all the properties that are five acres or more in size on this zoning categories, and there's about 13 that would be affected by this text amendment.
Zoning categories again.
Yeah. Industrial, business center, and C-74 commercial, which is all along 74. Most of those zoning categories are on commerce, 74 or Matthews and East Trail or Gribble.
All right. So that's how that EPCON and other developments have their sales office and.
That's a separate.
Yeah, that's not in this.
This is not in this. Yeah, that's separate. You're allowed to have a sales office or a construction trailer. This is for a permanent, like a, a trailer's not permanent, but it would be like a permanent structures that they could also have as like a break room on their site.
So what is a permanent highway building? There's that definition in there that I don't know what it is.
So for a permanent highway building.
It's just the way the ordinance describes it.
What is it?
So I'm not quite sure how to answer that, but like a permanent structure is the, you know, like a primary structure, their original structure.
Is it a mobile home or motor home, mobile home type building on a foundation?
I believe it would be kind of like, yes, a trailer on a foundation. I'm not really quite sure how to answer that one, that question. Yeah, I would say, let's have the applicant up here, so he can discuss it with you.
Just turn my mouth a little.
Yeah, of course. I'm not too familiar with trailers, I apologize. So I'll let.
Is it a structure that's not present on site?
I don't know.
I mean, that's a permanent.
Ready to put this down on the keyboard, I might launch this into orbit or something. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Walter Fields. My client is Catalyst Properties. They are a company that specializes in supply chain logistics and things of that nature. They have several sites in the Charlotte region. I just completed last week a rezoning on a site for them in Charlotte for the same sort of facility. What got us started on this was a piece of property on Smith Farm Road, 3400 Smith Farm Road. I think that Metromont Concrete was there at some point in time in the past, and they have now moved on. And so my clients looked at that and we read the ordinance and worked with Max and concluded that this was a space that they would have an interest in using for some of their logistics storage, might be a portable, portable offices, might be portable classrooms, might be machinery waiting to be delivered to a manufacturing operation, or machinery from a manufacturing operation waiting to be shipped overseas or someplace else. So the idea is it's a, it's a storage facility, open storage. What they wanted to be able to do is to have an onsite office. And there's a small building on the site today, and Max and I were just talking about. It's essentially a non-conforming building, so it's a permanent building. It's been there for a number of years. What we wanted to be able to do, and I haven't looked at the other 13 tracks, but the staff has, is if, for example, we're storing mobile offices in transit from one place to another, we'd like to be able to have people onsite to manage the comings and goings of the equipment, how things are stored, provide some security, just some overall supervision for the site. And one of those office-type trailers would be what we would like to be able to use. And we came up with this notion of having, it's got to be 50 feet behind the front property line, so it's away from the street. If there's a primary structure, it's got to be behind that primary structure. And, and on any piece of property, you could only have one of these office management-type units. And we hope that that was fairly simple. Max and I worked a little bit on some of the language there. I'm not wedded to any one, because I think it's important for us all to have the same understanding. And so if, in fact, the Smith Farm site, if that small building is viewed as the principal structure because of its history on the site, then that would still fit. And, and the blue language about if such a structure is present would not be relevant because one is present. And still, even with that, only one of these other trailers, and they're like, you know, 10 by 20 or 10 by 30, it's just an office trailer. You've seen them all over on construction sites and things of that nature, behind the existing building, just for onsite management and security for that facility alone. So we, we worked with this additional language. We looked at a couple of different options about where to put it in the ordinance, and I think it was the general opinion of the, of the town's attorney and of the planning staff that this was the best way to go about doing it. We're, we're not trying to clutter up the town. We're trying to be able to operate a facility in the town, but do so in such a way as to not to create any particular, an unsightly situation, where we'd be behind whatever building is already there. And there would only be one opportunity on each site, no matter how many you have or how big they are, to have such a facility like this. And so that's the genesis for our text amendment, and that's how we came to where we are tonight.
With the staff, is there more than, you said of the 13, any of them about residential property? That's the only thing I can think of that might want to screen from residential use,
It's possible, but I don't, I don't believe. So most of the industrial properties.
What did you describe?
That it means back up to would be the Navy Forest Park.
Yeah, the newest zoning category, not highway commercial, not industrial, business center, third one, I don't know where those are. That's new, right?
Blenheim, so the new Stone Creek neighborhood, and then the possible apartments, the Willows, would be adjacent to the business center. So I mean, but none of those properties are five acres.
Right. Okay.
I think with regard to this particular site, the land on both sides is industrial and behind us is a, is a main rail corridor.
Yeah, no, I see your site right here, Walter.
We're actually looking at them.
Oh, okay, sorry, you've got a better view than I do.
We're not reading ESPN or anything.
It's, it seems innocuous to me. I'll make a motion, we can get a second, and then it can be more discussion if you like, but I think it's fine.
Which one are you? I mean, I'd just like to understand.
Yeah.
Kind of, from a legal standpoint, the, the but put in that one sentence, how does that change it? And Max, maybe that's a question for, for you?
I had Mac review both. He was okay with it.
Okay. So how does, but what, what does that change about it? What do you mean, from a legal point of view?
The intent's still the same.
I think in an earlier version of that sentence, there wasn't a period or the word but there, it sort of ran on, and I thought that just clarified it a little bit. That's my editing, but I will defer to the wisdom of the staff and their attorney.
I would prefer the second paragraph, but, but what, let me get it really clear. There's not only going to be the one office trailer back there, but a bunch of others that will be sold, or they're coming in and then sold out or distributed out?
It's, it's not a sales site, is it? It is a logistics site where materials and equipment can come and go. I live up in Lincoln County, and one of the schools nearby just brought in 24 new classroom buildings. And those classroom buildings typically come from manufacturer, and they're stored at some point until they're ready to be delivered, and then deliver them all. That's the sort of logistics and supply train type activities that we would expect to occur on this site.
Okay. Now, those are stored behind the building?
Yes.
Is it fenced off at all or not, or will it be?
There'll be a security fence around it.
I think, I don't see, I don't see one, but there could be one. All right, I'm good.
There's one now, yeah.
Clarity, the blue language was just added, but we're just saying.
So that is, that was not included in the text amendment that I sent out to counsel. But I, I am bringing that forward to consideration by the council. My recommendation would be the, the bottom language, but I wanted to show you the top language. The applicant wanted you to see that as well.
That's the applicant, what the applicant would, would prefer.
Yes.
So really, the big change is, if I'm reading this correctly, the but, it's negligible. Agreed, it doesn't change, I agree it's better writing, you know? But a number two.
That's material.
That would, that would change it in the sense that it could allow a trailer onsite if there's not a primary structure. And the second, the third one would be, it could allow more than one, just one of the onsite management office trailers.
Correct. And, and again, I, I thought that in the original language that Max and I had talked about earlier on, the only one trailer is allowed, it just needed to be fleshed out so we know what trailer we're talking about, and that's the onsite management office trailer. So there's no, there's no question about that. I'm just trying to get clarity for all involved.
I agree with that, especially that third line, as the bottom one is written, it could be one of the ones that are in transit.
Right. And, and again, I, my great hope is that we can all have exactly the same understanding, so there's no surprises down the road.
Oh, you know what? The original reason I asked you to come up first was, can you define what a permanent highway building is?
Well, I would, I would do what any planner would do, and I'm a city planner, is I'd go to the ordinance and look up and see if there's a definition for it.
Is it in our UDO?
I, I, we'll check.
Oh, well.
Actually, this will probably be the best place. If the mouse.
It's okay, Max.
Okay.
I wouldn't waste time on that tonight.
Okay. But I can change this amendment. I didn't realize the business specifically sold the trailers when I wrote, when the text amendment was written, so I didn't know that how number three affected their business.
Mayor may not, but yeah, I get it.
Just clarity.
Yes, so I clarified this one, and then.
Copy the top number three to the bottom number three.
I see.
My, my concern is, it was presented as the bottom one to planning board, correct?
So, planning board, this is actually coming, most of this amendment did not, was not presented exactly like this. This is due to their comments and concerns that it's presented to council this way.
Based on their comments and concerns?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So originally, it didn't have one, two, and three, it was kind of one big paragraph, and I can pull that amendment up to you.
My only concern is, we've discussed that at number two, right, E2 is material change. And so are we voting on a material change that has not been vetted by planning board? But if it was something that was recommended by planning board?
I recall the conference, there was a conversation about permanent buildings and how this related, so maybe, and Max and I, we've been going back and forth on the best way to cover everything.
It was mentioned by planning board with their recommendation.
Okay, okay, then I'm, I'm fine with it.
It's not material, and it's material as clarifying to protect the town. It's not material.
So, see, so from what I understand is that you'd still like the, most of the original language except number three changed to one, only one such onsite management office trailer is allowed.
Be number two.
And number two, completely behind a primary structure.
No. Walter's.
I like this.
Edit is important, I think. I'm only saying it's material.
If you want to allow it on properties that do not have a primary structure, then yes, it's, it's important. If it's important for you all to have it directly behind a primary structure, so maybe it's not so visible, then you should go with Max's original language at the bottom.
I'm fine with.
And, and if you'll allow me, Max and I talked about this just before the meeting. And as long as I leave here with the understanding that the, the building that's on the property today would be viewed as a permanent structure, because it's obviously been there for years and years, and then we would be able to have one onsite management office behind that building, if I leave you with that understanding, then I, I think that works well for us, too.
That is my understanding. I'm good with that.
Now, there are two buildings on that site, I'll just point out, one's bigger, one's smaller, it looks like on the map. So I'm just clarifying which building is going to put the trailer behind.
I guess they will let me know which one's the primary structure.
Well, the larger ones off the side, so if, if I'm looking at the right site, Mr. Fields, there's a.
I mean, I'll pull.
You're familiar with it?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Could you point out the primary structure on this?
I think that's a question for the zoning administrator to make that determination, but I'll give you an opinion if you.
Yes. I think it's the big one there.
I would think it would be the big one, so it would be behind that. The other one is just a little small.
Something.
I think it may have been a dispatch building or some scales or something on property.
Okay, I just didn't want you to, them to want it to be placed behind what looks like the central building, but not primary.
Yeah.
Okay.
From my understanding, it's this larger building.
Between those two, I'd have to go with door number one.
All right.
If I was using this site as interpretation, but for the text amendment, it does affect 13 properties.
I understand.
Other questions? Concerns, thoughts?
What, what, what was the property on? I mean, what's the name of the property? And what, what's the address?
3400.
3400 Smith Farm Road.
You want to see it?
No, I'm good. I'll look at it later.
So I'll make a, get ready to motion?
No.
Not yet.
Public hearing. Anybody here from the public for this hearing? Hearing, Walter Fields was the only one, he already, any additional?
No, sir, unless you have any questions of me.
All right, I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Ready for council discussion and or vote? Did I see a hand up over here, Heather?
No, I was, I was just clapping for no reason. Just nervous.
with addition of item three, reading only one such onsite management office trailer
That's his motion.
Okay, I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous?
I didn't know if he was finished or not.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm deleting that, and then I'm going to save it.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, thank you for coming. Pretty sure I've got a statement to read, or we do somewhere.
Oh, a statement of consistency.
Yeah, where is it?
I have it on paper if you want it.
Lead the way on that. No. All right. Ready for?
Yep.
Please do.
Counsel approves the proposed amendment that states that town council finds and determines that this text amendment is consistent and reasonable with the key guiding principles, goals, objectives of the CLU SP for the following reasons. This text amendment protects the Stallings community's health, welfare, and safety.
Second by Heather. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, statement of consistency and reasonableness is approved. Next up on the agenda.
Thank you again very much.
Thank you. Patrick?
Evening, counsel. I just want to let you know that staff would like to recommend text amendment 23, I'm not recommend, would like to withdraw text amendment 230201 accessory structure limitations in order to further consider it and do some work on it to bring it back to council at a later point.
All righty, thank you very much for bringing that.
Sure thing.
Withdrawal to us.
Just clarifying, I'm pretty sure it's just a typo, this here has O2.
Prove to Patrick.
It's irrelevant.
Okay, okay, good, good point.
All right, we deferred grant policy amendment from the 411 meeting. Alex, would you like to fill us up on this one, please?
Don't think there's any new news. And Stephen had some concerns with.
Excuse me, council member Ayers had some concerns.
Stephen's fine. It's the second bullet.
Bullet, right here. Council member Ayers said the second bullet under three. And this is situations where the town manager could approve the application for a grant if it's less than $50,000, if all these criteria, and the, I think the issue, and council members don't let me put words in your mouth, was there was a concern that, from Stephen, that as you balance kind of the incentive to apply versus the oversight, that there could be, we perhaps need to remove that second bullet point to greater way the incentivization of pursuing those grants. So I believe, not to speak for you, I heard you say that specifically parks could be slowed down with that. And I talked to Ms. Donley, Ms. Donley, to kind of clarify, so she'd be happy to kind of provide some additional perspective. I know that that might be helpful, was helpful for me to talk to her, so y'all could consider it, because I know the board needs to have some level oversight to balance that, to make sure things are happening appropriately, so.
And just the way that this is written, with the any in there, my concern is, is that, taken to the extreme, then anything that we buy or acquire with this grant money is going to have some type of maintenance associated with it, for the most part. I mean, so it seems like we would immediately discount the whole reason why we're trying to update this particular, you know, policy, basically. So that's my only thing, is that I just don't want to go through the steps of doing this and then ultimately render it useless for the type of things that we're actually trying to go after.
Well, I, I was the one who objected a little bit last time, Steve, about taking that out. You make, you bring up an interesting point. I, I'd rather the manager not have authority to commit future dollars beyond the grant, but those are dollars. But you make a good point about services. I don't know how to solve it, I would be fine taking out the maintain any services if that makes you feel more comfortable. I would just be concerned about this manager or a, a future manager getting a $50,000 grant, as I said last time, and then putting us on the hook for whatever that will total another million dollars over a decade. And that just feels like the manager wouldn't want to be there either. But I see the difference in resources and services, so you bring up a fair point.
Well, doesn't the manager have discretionary, a discretionary amount of authority? Alex, I can't recall what the dollar amount is.
It's $20,000 typically.
What if we just limited that subject to the discretionary amount?
I was thinking the same thing, yeah.
And anything above that needs to come to council.
You're not talking about the 50, you're talking about the bullet, about ongoing. I like that, yeah.
And Eunice, I'm, I'm thinking about the conversations we've had in the committee for Parks and Rec, where it's come up that, you know, it's a grant for a swing set. I mean, obviously, we're not just going to let the swing set sit out there in rust, it's going to have to have, be maintained, so, and that would, that's, that's the only piece. So I, I would be okay. So I, I would be okay with that. And then that would allow enough maintenance within the year to bring it back to the next budget, to include the maintenance during the next budget cycle.
Yeah, if it, if it was excessive, we would deal with it outside of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Policy.
I like that. You okay with that, Alex?
Yes, sir.
Now, yeah, I am, but I see, that would just cut my attention. This comes from the police department, and we're talking about grants that are totally, you know, Parks and Rec. Is this a town-wide policy? Can you scroll down a little bit?
It would be, yes, sir.
Thank you, chief. All right, that's fine.
Yeah, I do, I do want to recognize chief for his leadership here, as well as, I know he had some help as well, the folks that helped.
Well, we added stipulation for their, the cap it at the manager's discretion, discretionary amount. Are we good with that?
I'm good with that.
Good with that, Alex?
Sir. So just to effectuate that, and Ms. Cox, please help me. I would think it would really will not be required to commit resources or maintain any service after the end of the grant period above a basis of twenty thousand dollars annually.
Or in excess of.
Can you say that again, Ms. Cox?
At the end of that sentence, in excess of twenty thousand dollars annually.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Thank you all. The next item on the list is sort of optional, and it's a budget continuation of budget discussion. And my recommendation is that we do not do this tonight, because Graham, Taylor Ray, and Wyatt are missing, and this would be important for them to be a part of as well, so, and we are pretty well caught up. Actually, we're ahead of schedule on our schedule of budget meetings, so if you all are good with that, we'll just drop that for tonight.
Good with that.
All right, I don't think that needs a vote, but we'll drop that. Next up on the agenda.
So moved for number seven.
Any second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I was ready to make that motion, because I didn't have to read anything.
Motion to adjourn.